The June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen Irish border selectmen's meeting to order. I'll start by reading the open meeting law statement. As required by open meeting law, we are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Is anyone interested in the video or audio of this? If not, we'll move to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving next to our weekly briefing.
Good evening. Amy Usawski, Conservation Administrator. Two quick things I think the selectmen in the town should know about. Right, as of this morning, we have an advisory closure for swimming at Henkley Pond. We have a, the start of what's a, a blue-green algal bloom there. There's, it's not closed, there's not a prohibition, but we do have advisory notice. The levels aren't so bad yet that it needs to be closed, but there will be continued sampling and hopefully we can lift that, their signage at any of the few public areas on Henkley, on Henkley Pond. And also, I just wanted to give you folks an update on our piping plover and turn situation. So as many people know, we are blessed by having piping plovers on our beaches, and this year is no different. So, we have a pair that has one chick left, only one, out of the four on Red River Beach. That chick is due to fledge or fly on around June twenty-sixth, so very soon. And once that happens, we can remove the barricades that we had to put in part of the parking lot, because since the birds can't fly, we put the barricades where we see them, crossing the parking lot essentially. So hopefully within a few days, we'll be able to move that, you know, well before the Fourth of July festivities that we have here in town and everybody using our most popular beach there. And we also, so we have the chick there, we have eight chicks between Winchmere Harbor Club and past C Street to about, almost Air Lane Pilgrim Road area. We have two sets of parents, four chicks each. Those are also due to fledge before the Fourth. So, all those areas are fenced off. It is by state law that we have to put up symbolic fencing, keep that intact, and advise people to please stay out of those areas. It does not restrict your access to the water. There's still plenty of room for you to walk, plenty of other beach area for you to use. So we just ask that you please respect that. The hazard is, if you, people don't respect it, and their animal, they don't have their animals, respect it, if the birds aren't successful, the birds can and sometimes do re-nest. So, that potentially puts prohibitions of use on certain areas of the beaches for the majority of the summer. So, we just encourage really people to, please be mindful and respect what we have in place. It won't be there for very long, and we'll get through the majority of the summer and the birds will be happy, and we'll be happy too. We also have common and least turns. We do not have any restricted activities or areas because of them, though. They're actually just kind of, they're not nesting here, they're just eating on our beaches. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions, comments, or, Amy? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Deputy Chief?
Good evening. We were able to secure an intern this spring, from, actually this summer, from the University of New Haven, Michael Pandicchio, local boy, went to, actually my alma mater, University of New Haven, and is helping the fire department out do pre-plans, pre-fire planning. So we go in, find out where the alarm systems are located and everything else, and develop these plans. As part of that, there's a software package that we were able to contract to do, and we were fortunate today, we found out we had a twenty-five-hundred dollar grant from Factory Mutual to pay for the first year of the software, and to provide a tablet for the fire inspector to go out and collect the data to do these pre-plans once Michael finishes his work. So, just wanted to let the board know that we got some good news for a change financially.
Where are these plans directed? Is it businesses, small businesses?
Yeah, primarily, commercial properties, what we would call target hazards, bigger buildings, Belmont, Winchmere Harbor Club, actually some of those have already been done. He did Town Hall, he's done the community center. So anything that has some type of fire suppression system, that's a more complicated response for the fire department, where we would need to know where the sprinkler hookup is, where the alarm panel's located, who the caretakers are, those type of things.
Does he inventory potential hazards waste as well?
Does not. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Duncan Berry, West Harwich. I had two items for, to bring to the attention of the board. First of which is, I wanted to alert you to the fact that an exhibition at the Harwich Historical Society opened yesterday. It's a full rear gallery of the museum is dedicated to the art, the houses of Captain's Row. It's a full expository presentation of everything from the settlement of the area in the sixteen-fifties down to kind of recent roadside architecture post-World War II. I think you'll notice also that we make a case for the accord, a proper zoning of the area, which we will be bringing to the board at a later date. Second item is, pursuant to that, oh, and I wanted to say, if anybody wants a personal tour or a group tour, I'd be delighted to take care of it at your convenience. The second item is pursuant to that, which is a letter that I think you will find instructive. It is dated June twentieth, twenty-seventeenth from the, twenty-seventeen, from the chairman of the Eastham Board of Selectmen, and it is a discretionary referral for the Cape Cod Commission to consider a DRI development, a, for discretionary referral for DI, DRI, which is how they managed to sidestep dropping a Dollar General store in the midst of their precious spot on six A. It was a simple up and down vote. There were three criteria, one of which was the character of the, of the area, which I think goes without saying, dropping a almost eight thousand square foot commercial building with parking in the front, and the area of West Harwich that we're talking about is completely disruptive of the, the character of the area, the historical nature of the area, as well as the impact on the traffic. Although the proposal, the individuals who made the proposal have made their study on the traffic, I think anybody who is familiar with traffic on twenty-eighth between the Dennis Port Line and the Herring River on a cloudy day or a rainy day in July or August will know, you got a one-mile backup. So, I would like to submit this either to the chairman or to Mr., the administrator, to, just so you can review to see how simple it can be done, and I would like to thank you.
We'll put it in the package for next week.
Put it in the packet.
Great.
Duncan, as I, my understanding, Duncan, my understanding is this is now in front of the planning board?
Yes, it is.
That's correct?
Correct.
And they're determining whether they want to send it to the, to the commission or not, is that?
That may be so, but we are, what we've heard is both Deerfield and Eastham, it was done by the Board of Selectmen, regardless of what the planning board did. So we're simply going with the template that has been considered correct and precedent.
I'm, I like using our normal processes if we can, and come later, but any case, you get the word out with your statement.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe, I was at the planning board meeting. I believe there's two avenues of referral to the commission. One is through the planning board, there is another through the selectmen.
Okay.
So just...
So we can, we can put that agenda later in discussion. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Jeannie Wheeler. I'm a trustee at Brooks Library. You all should have received this invitation in your boxes, but in case you haven't, I'm going to read it to you, as well as to those watching. The staff and trustees of Brooks Free Library invite you to join us on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, from two to four, to celebrate the completion of our restoration and preservation project, as we thank the people of Harwich and the Community Preservation Committee for supporting this work. Thank you, we hope you all will join us.
We probably need to give another round of applause, just taking this done after all these years.
I think so, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for your support too. Thank you.
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I wanted to remind everyone that this weekend, we have on Saturday, the annual Harwich Chamber Charitable Foundation's Run for Harwich Youth. So Saturday, between seven fifteen, actually it's nine fifteen to eleven thirty, that it will affect Route twenty-eight to South Street. If anyone wants the exact route, they certainly can contact me, I'll put it up on our Facebook as well. I do know that the police are also doing a traffic advisory on it as well.
Thank you, Cindy. Is Larry Cole running?
Actually, he hasn't registered, no. You're surprising.
Hi Sheila.
Hi, I'm Sheila House from Harwich Youth and Family Services. Recently, two people have retired from Harwich Youth Services Committee after many years. The first is Barbara Siegel, who's on vacation right now, and she's a Harwich parent and psychotherapist who began her service with the, the board in two thousand nine, and she's been a really valuable resource with regards to mental health counseling and learning, and also a really fun volunteer at all of our events. It's the second member, Jim Hartley, who I came here tonight to recognize, because Jim has served on Harwich Youth Services Committee since its inception in, almost nineteen years ago, and he's retiring from the board. Jim was the Director of Students' Services at Harwich High School for many, many years, and he was one of the people in the school sector who was chosen to be on a study committee when the town was formulating the Position of Youth and Family Counselor. He was also one of a small group of people who wrote the actual job description to create a foundation and framework for the job that I was so fortunate to be chosen for. Jim believed and continues to believe that having essential supports for our kids in and outside of school is fundamental to helping this village of Harwich raise healthy and resilient human beings. His compassion, knowledge, and great sense of humor has been immensely appreciated by all the current and former members of Harwich Youth Services Committee. So I'd like to thank him and ask him to be careful on his motorcycle adventures.
Say a few words?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I've always felt that the town was very oriented towards children and kids, and, and in my work and in my volunteer, I was always impressed by, by the work that you folks do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jeannie Hewitt, the Director at Brooks Free Library. I wanted to make a couple announcements. On June sixth, our Assistive Technology Coordinator Carla Burke was honored by the Carroll Center for the Blind and the Mass Commission for the Blind with the Thomas Carroll Award for Employment, which recognized her as the Blind Employee of the Year from Massachusetts. This award recognizes blind and visually impaired employees who've made significant contributions to their organizations by their outstanding ability and job performance. Individuals are chosen because despite vision loss, they are exemplary employees and contribute to the overall culture of their organization and to the community. For those who don't know, Carla coordinates our VITAL program, which is an acronym for Vision Impaired Technology Assistance at the library. This, this program is in its sixteenth year of operation. Through this program, we teach people with vision loss to become independent users of technology. This gives them access to print again and the ability to manage their lives independently. The impact of this program can't be underestimated, it changes lives. Carla continues to be a role model and an advocate, ensuring that people with vision loss and everyone with disabilities are able to fully participate in all aspects of community life. Receiving this award is a very well-deserved honor, and we're extremely pleased that Carla's been recognized this way. My second announcement is about our summer reading program. The reading portion of the summer reading program is now underway since school got out today. Youngsters can log their reading and receive a free book and a prize. This year, we're doing away with the traditional prizes, the kind you might get like from Oriental Training Post or in a Happy Meal, just those little gadgets that, they don't last long and they get lost or broken. So we replaced them with maker kits. So we're giving the kids a little package with instructions and all the materials needed to do something creative, explore a STEM concept, or enjoy some activity with other family members. So some things are like making a catapult out of spoons, recycling crayons, a craft for that, making a squeeze ball, making slime, so those kind of things. We did a trial run last year, and they were extremely popular. The program portion of the summer reading program kicks off this Friday with a big recreation and reading program with the Recreation Department. This is the third year we've joined together to do one kickoff event. So families can sign their youngsters up for summer recreation programs and for summer reading. At it, it's this Friday on the field behind the community center. There'll be free hot dogs and games starting at five PM, and a magic show at six PM. So it should be a great time for all. And finally, I just wanted to say, the Friends of Brooks Free Library are sponsoring all the programs and activities that we offer in the summer. There's something almost every day for kids. Some of the upcoming programs are reading to dogs, we're going to be making some dirt cakes, there's some engineering challenges, craft programs, the Harwich Mariners come, Trevor the Juggler and magic shows. The schedule's available at the library and different venues around the community, and they're also on our website, which is brooksfreelibrary dot O I G. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sally Urbano, West Harwich. I wanted to make a quick comment as a follow-up to Duncan's statements about the DRI referral. John Edman did appear before the planning board and shared information with them about this referral, and the planning board does have it under consideration, and they're being very thoughtful about this, and we thank them for that. However, it is, it will be a collaborative effort, because from my understanding, if they vote the yes, it comes back to you all, and you will need to, you know, get on board or not, depending on your choice of that. But we also want you to know that the last planning board meeting, there were over fifty letters and that many people, I think, in attendance urging the town to please help us out with this referral. It's kind of our best hope to give us time to do the zoning and perhaps a village overlay that we've already started. In fact, Charlene has been helping us in this, and so has Sarah Kordoff. So, we urge you to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And, and Steve did jump in to correct me that we could both get involved, so, I got that. Anyone else for public comment? Announcements? We move to consent agenda?
Vote to approve the two thousand and nineteen annual miscellaneous reappointments. Vote to approve the recommendation of the Assistant Town Administrator to approve the installation of a approximately thirty-seven feet conduit and one handhold, number five oh six slash H six A, in Town Road to customer at thirty-six Huckleberry Path, Harwich. Vote to approve the recommendation of the Town Administrator for the promotion and appointment of Carleen Jones to the position of Assistant Assessor. Vote to approve the proposed Visiting Nurses Association FY twenty contract, four thousand dollars. And I guess we're not going to read E.
I'll second that. A through D.
A through D. Is there any discussion? Not, Link, could you comment on these?
I'd like to. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Link Hooper, DPD Director. I believe item A contains an appointment of Chris Nickerson as the alternate to the JTC. I'd like to recommend that that be Griffin Rider. I think I read that in the packet last week, if memory's not...
I thought it was Griffin Rider last week, too. Okay. Is that, you want to amend your motion?
Yeah. So how would I do that?
Well, we can vote on the others and bring that back.
Which, which position is this?
Positive motion, but to...
Let's make a, let's have a positive motion then for B, C, and D.
I think you want to do the exception, though, of the Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee Representative Alternate, because that has Chris Nickerson, if the request is to have Griffin Rider.
Okay, so that's what the...
That's what the request is.
So, vote to approve the two thousand and nineteen annual miscellaneous reappointments, with one change, Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee Representative Alternate, no longer being Chris Nickerson, now being...
Griffin Rider.
Griffin Rider.
I'll second the, second the change, yeah.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And, do you want to bring back E, Don?
Yeah. The only reason I asked to split that out is that it's a second reading for policy change. I don't think it belongs in the consent agenda. I've got no particular problem with it, but perhaps we could walk through the actual change language from last time?
Okay. Maybe Joe or Chris, you could go through the language change?
It's called an overhaul.
Yes, it is.
If I may, yeah. So, in consultation with the Administrator and Leadership of the Board, what I've articulated in the memo there is what's meant to be a streamlined process of, the Board has a meeting, if that meeting has an executive session, if there's no legal impediment to an item, the executive session minutes are drafted, they're placed in the confidential file for review. If any member has a concern or objection, they notify staff of that. And, yep, it'd be in the file for a week, so that the timing actually works out that, if I remember correctly, it's going to be two meetings later if you meet weekly.
Yeah. And I, I insisted on a, on a, on a deadline, one week deadline, because I don't want it to hang on forever, so we can make a decision on executive session, you have a week to think it over, if not, then just move ahead with life.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd move that the revised procedure for the release of certain executive session minutes be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have this, I won't go there now. We don't have any public hearing or presentation, so move to new business, and A is five-year recertification for participation in the Community Rating System Program. Charlene, you going to speak to this?
I wrote the memo, I guess so. Thank you, I'm Charlene Greenholt, Town Planner. We are in the process of our five-year recertification for the Community Rating System. From here on out, I'm going to call it CRS, which does not stand for something else that we all know. As you may be aware, we are currently participating in this program, we've been in it for almost twenty-five years. At this juncture, we are considered a Classification Eight, which allows for a ten percent discount for those who are in need of flood insurance. That's an approximate savings of approximately, of sixty-nine thousand dollars for policy holders. It is looking like this year, through the valiant efforts of, I do need to call out some staff, Elaine Banta, my Planning Assistant, and particularly Shannon Holt Jarboe, who is from the county, who assists communities with the flood insurance. You've seen her before, she's been here before. They work tirelessly to get the information and, and the paperwork that we needed to participate in this. Also, Amy Soski, Conservation Agent, Nikki Smith, the Assistant Conservation Agent, Shayla Delaney, Executive Assistant, oh, I did forget Ken Murphy, who is instrumental, and also Ray Chesley, the Building Commissioner. This year, it looks like we are actually going to move to a Class Seven, which is really huge. There's only, I think, one other community on the Cape, which would afford us a fifteen percent discount for those who need flood insurance. So that's approximately a ninety-eight thousand dollar a year savings for those folks, or about three hundred and thirty-three dollars per annual policy. So for some folks, that's, that's really significant. What you do need to understand about participating in the Community Rating System, this isn't something we just do every five years, this is something we do day in and day out. We provide information either in person, on the phone, through our website, through the, the library, which has an extensive collection of flood insurance-related materials, that we are constantly providing information about, are you in a flood plain? Yes, you are, no, you aren't, what does that mean? You know, it means you have to build to a certain standard if you're doing certain things. So, so this is a daily thing. We do have to recertify every year, but this year is our five-year certification. I can go into more detail if you would like, but at this point, I have provided you with three documents. One is our Form C, C two thirty, which is a certification that the information, to the best of the chair's knowledge, is correct. I guarantee you, it's correct. The second is the CRS Program Data Table. Again, you're certifying to the best of your knowledge, it is correct, please trust me, it is correct. We've gone over these numbers, information ad nauseam. And then the third is, it's simply a letter of protection for open space in the flood zone. Under the selectmen's jurisdiction, there are eight properties, most of them are completely under, not completely underwater, but are underwater at high tide, so it's not like you'd be using them to do anything anyway. They're not suited for a beach, they're not suited for a landing of some sort, they're just wet. So, at this time, I would recommend a vote to authorize the chair to sign the Form C C two thirty, the CRS Program Data Table, the Letter for Protection of Open Space in the Flood Zone, for submission to, for the five-year recertification of the Community Rating System Program for the Town of Harwich. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. And just to show you, this is only a small part of what the submittal is. I didn't give you all of that information...
Thank you for that.
Because a lot of it is either quite meaningless to, to you, and some of it frankly, and I don't even have copies of that, are actually, are very private information that is under lock and key, and we are not allowed to share, except with the Community Rating System folks.
Thank you. Michael?
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign a letter regarding wetland and flood plain land under its jurisdiction as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Discussion? Are you breaking, are you breaking out three votes? You're doing, okay. Thank you.
Just a quick comment is, great job, this is, this is maybe the top example of a, of a service we're, we're doing to help a lot of people. And it doesn't come without, doesn't come free.
It, it does not, and we're actually almost eligible, actually we are eligible for a Classification of Six. However, because there, and I don't have the, the politics behind it, but because of something at the state level, it's precluding any community within Massachusetts from getting to a classification Six. There is a movement by folks at the county and other entities who are involved in Community Rating System to get that changed, so that we can get a twenty percent discount for folks.
Good. Thank you, Charlie. We have a motion that's been seconded, made to the first letter. There's no more, any discussion from the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael?
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign required verification letter for CRS recertification as presented, Community Rating System.
The second? Don? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Michael?
I move we vote to authorize the chair to sign a letter for protection of open space in flood zones.
Second.
Second? Don seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Thanks again, Charlene, and thanks all, all the people working with you.
Yep, great team. Thank you.
B, our new business is road maintenance revisit due to the failed funding. We asked Link and, Chris, you want to start, but we asked this to discuss?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to have Link in, but just to do a little bit of an overview, we had intended on town meeting, having two articles for consideration, one was to redo Lower County Road, that failed. I think that because we were trying to offset some of the Lower County Road work, we put into the road maintenance program that seven hundred thousand out of the one point four million of that program would go to offset some of the work on Lower County Road, because we put that in for bonding reasons. I think some people at the ballot thought that that was another way to do the project, it was not, it was just a way to supplement. So ultimately, it got voted down. What that means for the town is we are now left with only an allocation of approximately just under seven hundred thousand from Chapter Ninety, in which we'd have to do the roadways in the community, as opposed to one point... What that means for the town is we are now left with only an allocation of approximately just under 700,000 from Chapter 90, in which we'd have to do the roadways in the community as opposed to 1.4 million dollars. So, I was asked to meet with Lincoln, put together a plan for what we're going to do to address that. So, I asked Lincoln to come in and bring some folks with him, to kind of walk through the ramifications of what we will be able to do and won't be able to do as we move forward for FY '20.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, thank you.
In conclusion? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Link Hooper, DPW Director. I was asked last Wednesday by Administrator Clark in a meeting that I requested to discuss these subjects, to answer the questions to the board, what are the impacts of the failed 700,000 article, a road maintenance article? And what's our plan for Lower County Road? I've actually been quite surprised by the number of inquiries I've had about the impact on the road maintenance program and not having local funding for the first time in 16 years. And I'll tell you the same thing I've told everybody else. Our roads are in very good condition. Our mains are in better condition than the secondary roads. We've had an aggressive road maintenance program that has been supported by various boards of selectmen, finance committees, capital outlay committees, various town administrators, and the voters. And they've entrusted us to manage their most important asset, or I view it as their most important asset, the roads, certainly the most expensive asset you have. And I think collectively, we've done a pretty good job at that point. This is the first time in 16 years since I've been director that we have not had local money. So, what is the impact of that? Really not much. And I know people are going to sound surprised at that, but our roads are in pretty good condition. We've had an aggressive maintenance program that's served the town very well. You could probably take another year off, and mostly, people wouldn't notice much. At some point, you reach an inflection point in a road's utility, and you transition from a maintenance model to a reconstruction model, as has been the case with Lower County Road. That becomes exponentially more expensive to do that versus attacking it maintenance first, reconstruction second. In fact, if memory serves me correctly, I think we've only reconstructed two roads in 20 years. Is that, is that about right? Yeah, only two roads in 20 years. So, I think there's not a lot of negative impact for one given year taken a breath. That was my sales pitch. So, where we are today, we had, I had two previous Chapter 90s. Let me back up. We get just shy of 700,000 a year in Chapter 90 money and have so pretty steadily from the state. Chapter 90 money is the, our road tax, yes, our gas tax coming back to the town. And there's a process in which we seek the board's approval, and we get reimbursed by Mass DOT for that work. We get about 700,000 of that year. Last year was 688,000. I placed two project requests in front of the board. One, chip seal various roads, that was 331,000, and one for drainage on Lower County Road for about 300,000. Great Western.
Great Western.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And I did that, time, one was before town meeting, one was after town meeting, but before the 700,000 failed. I subsequently had to withdraw those two requests because of the 700,000 not being available, and Mass DOT had not released the FY '20 apportionment until last week. In fact, when I had met with the administrator, I don't believe they had, I found it Wednesday online finally, that it was released. Had we done those two projects, and for some reason, the state budget didn't pass, or we didn't get the apportionment, we would have had zero money to contend with any contingencies that come up. And in this business, it sounds like, you know, 100 or 200,000 is a lot of money. We just had to repair Great Western Road Culver, about 40,000 repair, because we're going to lose the road. So, we withdrew those two Chapter 90 project requests out of those two concerns of not having money. Now, they released it. We didn't do the work, and we have approximately 1.3 million in Chapter 90 that we're sitting on, that I proposed to utilize on, I think it's page two in your correspondence, to adjust the road maintenance program for year one, or say FY '20. To take the five-year road maintenance document, that I believe is in your correspondence, and move that all out one single year to continue the road maintenance. Part of that request was to do Depot Road in South Harwich, put drainage in. We did withdrew the drainage on Great Western Road, because we couldn't simply, we didn't have enough money to do the project in its entirety, it's about a million dollars. Doing the drainage on Depot Road in South Harwich is to stay ahead of the gas company. As you may recall, they dug up nine and a half miles of road in Harwich. They owe us a curb-to-curb overlay on it all, and we like to go and get the drainage in prior to the road being finished. I have a Chapter 90 project request with me, it's on short notice, to take the place of the one essentially that we were doing on Great Western Road. The urgency with this is that I have a contract with Robert Our Company, it'll be expiring in sometime in August, that has very favorable rates to the town of Harwich. I have to rebid the contract, so I don't know who I'm going to get for a contractor, and rest assured, it's going to cost more money in the future. And with your consent, I'd like to bring, I have the document ready for your signatures if you would entertain doing so. Again, the two ones you've signed previously, I have withdrawn. So, right now, we have no Chapter 90 project request in the queue. I'd like to do...
Then can you summarize the dollars that you withdrew, and what's the dollars on it?
173,500. Withdrawed?
The two that got withdrawn was the chip seal roads of 331, and then the Great Western Road drainage of 302.
302.
302.
So, that's 600,000 plus the 700,000 that we'll get in the new allocation for...
And your request on this to do the work on the, is how much?
Is 173,500. Much less. 173, yeah, 173,500.
Okay.
And again, the urgency is I simply have a contract. We're going to be using the contractor on Great Western Road. We'd like to really do that. It's about half the, a little over half the project value, but do that on Depot before I have to rebid that contract.
Okay. Any more? Are you ready for questions?
Oh, I'm, excuse me, Mr. Chair. That was half the discussion. The other discussion was Lower County Road. I serve your pleasure if you want these documents or...
Yeah, let's discuss this first, and we'll go to Lower County Road. Ed, did you ever comment on this? The question?
On Depot Road, what's the extent? Is it 39 to 28?
Yes, sir.
Full length?
Pardon me?
Full length.
Yeah, okay, well, two phases. We want to get the drainage in now, allowing the time, the drainage to settle, before national grid comes and overlays the roads. I believe they're about a year out, although the surrounding towns are pushing them to get there sooner than later. And quite frankly, we had an intermediate patch, a ride quality intermediate patch, that the other towns didn't require, thanks to Mr. Nickerson, where nobody knows the difference. The roads ride pretty well. But all nine and a half miles, we're going to get a curb-to-curb overlay on, and that includes the entire length of Depot and South Harwich.
Okay, is there any other? Don?
It's not helpful for why we're here at this point, but just in general, we've got to do a better job writing these ballot languages. I know that it was confusing, and I know that there were certain things that we wanted to have in there, but there wasn't anybody that said exactly how to write it. And I saw when I was sitting there filling out the ballot, if it turns out the Lower County Road goes down, the way this other one was worded, it looked kind of like Lower County light. It was a self-inflicted wound. I mean, this is something where we get money back for repair work from the state for Chapter 90, and now we're not going to get it. That's a serious problem, and we've got to consider how we're going to write this next year.
Just a quick response to that. I think it would be incumbent on us as selectmen in those town meetings to be able to be articulating that. When we see something like that happening on the town meeting floor, we should be there ready to say, you know, don't misread this article, you know? You're right, it should have been written differently, I think.
Yeah, this was the ballot item, not the article.
Yeah, well, okay, but the ballot item, excuse me. It should have been written differently, but, you know, I think it's incumbent on us to really make sure the voters understand what's going to happen when something like this takes place. Because now here we sit without money.
Michael?
I just imagine that the documents that you want to hand in, and what you're speaking of for drainage contract, you want to give to the chair so we can put it on the agenda for next week to vote on? Since it's not an agended item and we can't vote on it tonight?
I was hoping that there might be enough of a nexus, that it was in our plan and in the correspondence, but you're absolutely correct. It is, I was working with staff, thinking that under all normal circumstances, I could just reduce the project request with the state, but you're dealing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, I need to do all new documents.
Well, my sense is, is that the amendment, the agenda's broad enough that we could consider this.
And just two points. One, Lincoln, just on the proposed roadway maintenance program for FY 2020, the first one, Depot Road drainage, that's the 230,000, that's what you're referring to as the actual contract?
Yes, sir.
And this material was in the package indicating that we were going to make a change to the 2020 program, and we identified that as one of those changes?
It's in the package.
It is in the package, and it's material.
The contract's in the packet?
No, 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 just the acknowledgement that the work is going to be done, the drainage work. It could be more overtly on the agenda, but...
So, the line item is what we're going to vote on?
Yeah.
Really?
And then the second point, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to follow up on the discussion. I could not, I work with bond counsel to put this together, the language of the ballot question, and we did not have in the road maintenance program that we were going to do Lower County Road. So, if I had put that we were going to do Lower County Road, and we had no reference to it in the maintenance plan, we would have had issues with bond counsel. So, those ballot questions are predetermined, so I mean, I'm very limited to what we could do. But I do think, going forward, certainly a lesson learned, because I had a few people come up to me and said it was confusing too, that when we construct these, maybe we should have done two articles or two ballot questions to kind of separate those two items.
Lincoln, another comment on that? I, Michael raised concern. My sense is, it's broad enough, but where's the rest of the board? I don't want to make that determination.
Mr. Chair?
What's the timing?
Again, my urgency here is I have a long, a three-year contract that's expiring with the Our Company, who's been an excellent contractor. They have resources, they've communicated, Mr. Nickerson, they have resources available to get this done now before the, our contract expires sometime in August. If we don't, and Mass DOT doesn't turn these documents around that quickly. So, I...
In that case, is...
I'm simply trying to beat the clock, and the financial, and I am 100% sure, our bid going forward is going to be more than our current bid is with the Our Company.
I'll entertain a motion, so if anyone wants to move ahead.
I'd move that we approve the Chapter 70, Chapter 90 submission as presented by the Director of Department of Public Works.
So, to approve the drainage on the proposed road maintenance program in the amount of 173,500 for drainage work on Depot Road, South Harwich?
Is there a second?
Can I just ask?
Sure can.
Is it 173,000 or 230,000?
The estimate originally was 230,000.
Oh, great.
The actual request is 173.
Okay, fantastic.
That is a...
That's correct. The proper number, right. That was an estimate before, the actual number is the Chapter 90 document.
That's good news.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed and four in favor.
And four 1-0.
Link, the next item that you, which you discussed?
The second part that the board asked was, what is our plan for Lower County Road? We had a meeting with Administrator Clark, Chris Nickerson, our road manager, and our new town engineer, Griffin Rider, last week to discuss that, and Dan Pelletier, the water superintendent, as well. We have approximately 150,000 worth of patching to do out there. Now, a lot of that is my mistake. I let the water department do temporary patches out there, figuring we were going to be reconstructing the road, so there was no need for permit-type patches to be done out there. And lo and behold, the project is not getting done, so we need to patch it. It will not last through a winter. I mean, the plows have just picked all this stuff up and tossed it to the side, and if that happens in the wintertime, we have no ability to get hot mix. So, we have this project. It came out to 150,000 based upon our current county bid. It is our feeling that if we bid this as a separate project, we'll have some economies in scale that'll lower the price on that. How much, I don't know. We think probably 2 to 30%. Why, you might ask? The county contract does not have any minimum requirements of square yards that they're patching, so they've got mobilization built into that price. If we have two, two and a quarter miles that we're doing with a whole boatload of patches, I think we'll get a better price. And we can do that in-house with the assistance of the new town engineer and get that bid, and hopefully do some patching in the fall. Second part of that would be crack sealing after the patching is done. And then comes the larger question. We could chip seal the road and probably get seven years out of it before we do nothing, seven years out of it. Chip sealing that, we could do for probably about 100,000. And you buy yourself some time. This is the methods that we've utilized on secondary roads, neighborhood roads. I think some of you actually enjoy neighborhoods with some chip seal in it. It actually, I've tried to avoid putting chip seal down on major roads. Some of our counterparts, Dennis and Yarmouth, do just that. Anything we have a speed limit above 30, we try to avoid putting a chip seal, simply out of ride quality. But that is a possibility to do that, chip seal it in late spring, early summer. I don't think we can chip seal here until Memorial Day. Our windows are rather short, Memorial Day to Labor Day, that they're able to. If we were to do that, we would do that with 20% rubber, as was done in the town of Brewster on Route 39 and Freeman's Way. Actually, came out a pretty decent job. I'm not necessarily a fan, it's a necessary tool in the toolbox, but what they did in Brewster, actually, I was impressed with. The other option is to rebid the project and bring it back to the voters, and hopefully with a different outcome. I still believe the right thing to do personally is to do that project. In round numbers, on that 4 million project, you've got a million dollars tied up in fixing the sidewalk. There's not an ounce of that sidewalk that's ADA compliant. About a million dollars in the ground in drainage. You wouldn't go and do the sidewalk without doing the drainage, because much of your drainage is going to be under your sidewalk. So, there's an order of operations to this, but I certainly defer to the board and what your pleasure is. I've asked some of my counterparts here tonight, Griffin Rider, who has 20 years as a civil engineer, who designed roadways and private development properties. I have Tommy Akableum, civil engineer, three, Mass DOT, retired gentleman, put the book job on Lower County Road together for us, and he's also the guy that built Route 137, or managed Route 137, which was the last successful tip project we have. And I've got Chris Nickerson with me as well, our road manager, who's been at this job for about 20 years. And I think, as proud as I am of our roads in town, the support of the voters and you, Mr. Nickerson knows, has earned that as well.
Any other comments or questions? That was a long, Michael?
Yeah, I just, we're not here tonight to discuss whether or not we're going to bring this project back before the voters... Yeah, I just, we're not here tonight to discuss whether or not we're going to bring this project back before the voters, right?
I think what we were looking for is some direction, that there's two roads to go, if you would. One is to delay a year or two and go back out. Or we could attempt to chip seal, hold the road together and kind of avoid it until such time as we have to do more major work. So, I think we were looking for at least a sense from the board in terms of what the thought process would be relative to the project.
Just a couple of questions.
Yeah, Michael?
Like you mentioned, that the, we pulled back the last two Chapter 90 requests because of the failed funding. But those were voted after the failed funding. So, can you just explain that to me?
There was two reasons. One, the failed funding, and two, Mass DOT didn't release the apportionment until last week. So, I had no idea. If we had done those two, $600,000 worth of projects, that's all we had.
Okay, thank you. The, in this memo that you put together, you show $120,000 water department responsibility. That hasn't been voted by the water commissioners yet?
Actually, to that point, the water department did have, obviously, they did the water work already on that project. They had $60,000, I believe, left that they allocated for the project. We were hoping to turn that back, because we thought it would go, the Lower County Road project would go forward. They could turn it back. We have asked them to hold those funds and they'll have to use that to contribute towards the project. So, it's $120 worth of obligation and we only have $60,000 identified in funding.
Michael?
I have some more, but Link has a comment.
We agreed, since some of this is on me and on us, we agreed to split the cost of those with the water department, which we think is the right thing to do.
So, the splitting came after this memo was in it? Because it says DPW Responsibility 30, Water 120? So, this has changed?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you, when you put this project out, we had this debate on this project before town meeting rejected it, you were going to spend $1 million of your Chapter 90 money on Lower County Road. Now, why are we only talking about spending, right now, $150,000? And not work on some of the drainage? The patchwork's one thing, but maybe I'm missing something?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We have the proposed roadway maintenance plan for FY 20, which is directly behind my memo, which totals 1.295589. And that's all Chapter 90 money and that's what we propose to do.
But I'm talking specifically about Lower County Road. What are you planning on spending on Lower County Road out of this money that's left?
The, right now, to go and do the patchwork.
Okay. Just $120,000?
So, why were we talking about spending a million out of the Chapter 91, 90 money for the project, but now we're not looking at spending any on drainage or any other part of that road?
As the project developed, the board seemed like they wanted to lower the impact to the taxpayers. So, I put the brakes on all our spending last spring in anticipation of that happening. So, if that had, if the project had gone forth, whether you had a $4 million bid, we would have probably needed a half, say, a half million dollars in contingency and police details, making it 4.5. We could have taken the million dollars in Chapter 90. I have 1.3 right now to use. That was the plan. Now, we're not doing the work and I don't think piecemealing this road is a good idea. I think, you know, we have, we should patch it and determine whether you want to take another bite at it and do it right or if we want to chip, chip seal the road.
So, just last comment. My argument on that, Link, would be, your argument at town meeting floor and in all the conversations we had were what shambles that road was in. And I think it would be wrong of the board to assume that we can bring it back one year later and have town meeting approve that road. And if you were going to spend a fair amount of money on that road before with a million dollars, in my mind, there's no reason why we shouldn't fix some of those drains on that road and fix some of the shambles that you discussed and get a little bit more of that road done.
Other comments? Link, you want to comment?
I don't recall, and please correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. When we go and overlay a road, we do it in its entirety, meaning we take care of all the ills at once. We start with the drainage. If the sidewalks, we adjust the sidewalks, you know, and then we go and overlay. Usually, our methodology is overlays, sometimes a mill and fill, and take care of guardrail and any other ill, signage, everything at once. I really have not had anything that I know of that we have tried to piecemeal, like you're suggesting, is just do a little piece here, a little piece there. I really think there's economies of scale and it's better to either do the project or don't do the project.
Just in response to that, thank you, Link. I get it, but you talked about what shambles the road was in. So, there's a pot of money here. The project failed. People didn't want to do it. So, what can we do to replace some of the drainage on that road and some of the major problems to fix that road for now, rather than just leave it and assume again that we're going to bring it back and the town meeting will vote it this time? And I don't, we don't need a debate on it.
Well, can I, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I don't know why I was looking, Mr. Clark. I just want to go back and just say, the reason this road got to where it is was because we had tip program, transportation improvement program, that we were trying to follow. This was the next road that was in the queue. We were going to do Route 124. Then my plan was to bring this to you and do this as the next tip. When 124 fell apart in a big way, it became obvious that if the political will didn't exist, when we didn't need the right-of-way, it certainly would not have existed where we would need private property takings to meet the complete streets. I still think Lower County Road would be a wonderful project, but let's face it, people are not going to take well to getting their property taken to meet a 43-foot cross-section to do that. So, at that point, and I'm talking six years ago, I brought this as a concept to the Board of Selectmen and said, "We should do this as a standalone because of the complexities of the road, because of the 2.25-mile sidewalk, which we don't have county bids to address." So, most of the things that Mr. Nickerson does is roadway maintenance, is usually, is usually overlays, sometimes a mill and fill. We don't, we haven't had to address sidewalks, certainly not one of this extent. There's probably a million dollars tied up in the sidewalk.
I think we, I think we understand it now, Link. Michael and more?
Link, I understand the background more than you know. I followed the whole thing, I was part of all the conversations. The question I have is, why now? Can't we do, the project failed, so it's gone. But are we going to not do the drainage that needs to be done where those two large puddles are down by Allen's Harbor? And are we not going to do some of the other work that we could potentially do by putting some things off that you were going to put off and spend a little bit more of that money now, because it did fail? That's my question. Not the history of the project, not why you brought it forward, none of that.
Don't ask that right now, let's go to Chris.
Larry, when we had the discussion, you know, I'm concerned as the administrator that Lincoln came to me about three months ago and said we were losing a culvert on Great Western Road. Great Western Road was up for 2020 to be done in the, in the roadway maintenance program, $930,000. And the estimated repair, just to do temporary repair, temporary repair, which means it may not last for a full year, was $40,000. To do the repair just on that stretch was estimated to be about $500,000. So, if we were, I mean, I understand the point. If we were to do $100,000, $120,000 worth of patchwork and then a million dollars worth of drainage, if we have a failure on Great Western, which we already had, we would have virtually nothing to address it with. And I think that's what we're trying to take into account, is if something else fails, because we just had a failure, that we need some resources in which to address that. That's the reason why we did that, Mr. Chairman.
Michael and...
And I appreciate that as well, but if, if Lower County passed, you wouldn't have any money, because we would have spent a million dollars of that money on that road. And that's my point. We were going to spend a million. Now, we're not. Now, we're going to split $150,000 and do some patchwork. But we were going to spend a million.
Link, let me, we can debate this forever.
I don't want to perpetuate it, but we had a million dollars, we had 1.4, so we had $400,000 in contingency. Here, we're asking for $500,000 in contingency.
I want to go a slightly different direction. Link, what's the, what's the urgency of discussion tonight on this?
None. I think the only urgency with Lower County Road is we've got to do some patching, regardless of what we do. We've got to get some patching, we've got to get that done prior to winter.
I don't want to be too analytical, because I'm accused of that sometimes, but you brought this in as a, you know, the whole roadway maintenance program. I'd like to ask you to bring it back, just on Lower County Road, and explain to us what, so we understand what the options are, the chip, you know, the steps are. So, we can have a thorough discussion. Because whatever our decision is, we're going to have to explain it at the town meeting next spring. So, just a discussion on Lower County Road.
I'm not a follower, forgive my ignorance. I think we have an option of we either chip seal it or we stop piecemealing the road.
Yeah, I think just as concisely, the cost to do each, the timings, so we completely understand it.
Survey your pleasure.
Thank you, Link. I just want to be sure, this is a big decision. If we come back, it's huge money. If we chip seal, you've thrown out there, we chip seal $100,000, that may last five or six years, but it doesn't solve the drainage problem. We've had some questions, can we do, you know, is there a process to do piecemeal? I understand that's an efficient way of going, but I think if we're going to, with all the dialogue we had last town meeting, to walk us through those steps, so we can explain, we understand it and can explain it will set us up for a better chance of success going, going forward, is what I'm trying to get at. Not, yes?
We could come back with more, a more detailed analysis on...
I could talk, hopefully, I'm not, you see what I'm trying to get at?
I do think the point, Larry, is that there's sections of that roadway where we have to do full-depth reconstruction. What we want to try to do is hold the roadway together by just doing these patches. The further we have to do full-depth reconstruction, the more that's going to drive the cost of this project. So, something, something has to be done, is kind of the bottom line.
In my mind, the only thing that makes sense is full construction. But do we have to do it this year, next year? Is there something that will buy us some time? That's what I'm trying to get at.
And I said that. I think if we go out there, we do the patching, I'm hoping the patching will come in about $100,000, maybe a little more if we bid that, get that done in the fall, crack seal the road, and then chip seal it. And then I think we buy ourselves five to seven years. We could certainly go in and address some of the puddles, if that's where Selectmen McCaskill was at. We do miscellaneous drainage. In fact, there's $100,000 worth of miscellaneous drainage in there all the time. That, that's not an issue.
What are you talking about in total cost to do that work, then?
The total cost to do that work? We'll have to bring it back.
Okay, because I'm adding my head. I'm getting up like a couple hundred thousand dollars to do the chip seal, $100,000 for the Steve.
The only thing I'd say is sooner or later, we're going to have to reconstruct this road. So, we better face it. I mean, we can replace, you know, culvert here and there and we can chip seal it, as Link said, but reality is, at some point, we're going to have to do this work. So, how can we do it in a way that doesn't cost the taxpayers way more money over a period of time, making them apparently happy in the short term? But long term, it could be a painful financial decision.
I actually don't disagree with that. I just want to be sure we spell it out.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
So, we, people clearly understand where we're going, if that's where we go. Let's see.
Bring it back.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to go first?
I was winded up last, anyway.
Oh, now, now. Two things, though. In the discussion about a half hour ago, I thought I heard that the hour contract's going to expire in August.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's some immediacy.
Well, we passed that one, though.
Okay, but then, looking at this, and I understand what Steve's saying, but in the equation, you're looking at this, looking over this, you can't presume calamity. Finance committee's set up to disperse money in the event of an emergency, should an emergency occur. I mean, I'd sooner, if we're going to be looking at this, I'd just as soon look at how much is available all in, assuming that we can patch Great Western in a way that can make it a year. And then we'll come back and hopefully we'll have Chapter 90 money next year to talk about that as a more permanent solution. But there's a little more available, if you, if you look at it that way, that if something, if something winds up becoming an emergency, they go for an emergency transfer from FinCom.
Thank you, Don.
Again, are we just throwing good money after bad doing this? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it just seems to me, there's all these various solutions that kind of carry us along over a period of time with the implication somehow we're protecting the taxpayer, we're far from doing any such thing.
Yeah, but the intersection of Brooks Road and Lower County, it's, you're not throwing good money after bad if you live on that intersection.
I understand what you're saying, but eventually, we're going to have to rebuild the road.
Ed?
Well, I guess that's, I can say, to the extent that we do a, replace a, do a drainage structure at some point, you know, and we put that in and then we decide we're going to repave it, we sort of got a stripped part of that work that we just did back, so we can then pave it. And we also probably had to put a culvert or drainage structure underneath the sidewalk when we had, had to re, sort of build the sidewalk, but we had to sort of rebuild the sidewalk to match what's there. And then we come along and have to strip all that out, because we're going to rebuild the sidewalk to meet the standards we need to meet. I mean, you know, you're just sort of doing work and then digging it up and doing work and digging it up again and paying for the same, same final project, product, three times by the time you're done.
Okay. I think, you know, we've had a good discussion. I think we need to bring this back so we walk people through what the steps are.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Next on the, as moving to contracts, is to award the bid for Town Howard Fire Station Number 2 Security System Bid to Galaxy Integrated Technologies and sign agreement document. Michael, you...
I just want to make a motion. I move we award the bid for Town Howard Fire Station Number 2 System Bid to Galaxy Integrated Technologies Inc. and sign agreed document.
The amount of... Eighty-five thousand, eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
I know Deputy Fire Chief stood up. I don't think, unless you need a discussion, I...
Just there to answer questions, so...
Okay. Any discussion, Michael?
Just one comment. I just wanted to acknowledge the Assistant Town Administrator's acknowledgement of Scott Tilslie and the amount of work that he did on this and thank Scott. It's outside of his job description, but he clearly does a lot more than he was having to do and thank him for us.
And Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to go further and declare peace in our time here. It's, say something even further nice. This is exactly what I've been looking for.
Summary, it's very good.
The summary, it puts it on the line about what was looked at and bullet points goes into how the approval recommendation was arrived at. Kudos, thank you.
Larry? And it showed how they save money on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that was, you know, a valuable read.
Lot of information.
I agree. Christopher, Pauline, you're for the memo you put together in summarizing this project.
I'm sorry. I said nice things about the new, the letter.
Don't leave the room when we're saying nice things.
I missed it, too.
It could be a while before something nice happens again, you got to stand.
We have a motion then in a second. Any more discussion? Anyone in the audience have a comment, point? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Old Business, first item is Phase 2 Sewer and Sewer Pump Station Easements, Execution of Order of Taking and Acquisition of Sewer and Drainage Easements in Public Ways. Execution of Order of Taking? Bid Robert, our contract, well, that's it.
Yeah, that's the...
So, we had a long discussion last week and we had some issues regarding the easements, the definition of them. Chris, you want to bring us up to date for what happened?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. The town clerk had brought in and had some concern in regards to some of the public ways. The town clerk had brought in and had some concern in regards to some of the public ways. Basically, in a nutshell, what had transpired was that the public ways were recorded at the Registry of Deeds, but we didn't necessarily have them on file downstairs. So when we, when the town attorney had gone through and done her due diligence, she had those book and page numbers or the register numbers, and she provided that material to the town clerk's office. So now the town clerk's office has that material. So the one issue that came up was that the documents weren't on file with the town clerk, but were on file at the Registry of Deeds. The other piece that came up, there were a few roadways that, they were so old, I think, that there was no book and page number, they were before book and page number. But these were county roads and a few other roads that the town has historically maintained. So the attorney drafted up a letter that I would attest as a town administrator that we have maintained those roads and we have a ownership of those roads through the maintenance of them, not ownership, but through the maintenance of it, and that that would be sufficient. The reason for doing this is really two parts. That was the thing that caused the delay last week. But is really to, in order to have the project go forward, the town needs to have possession of all the land in which the system is going to be constructed, all the easements for the pump stations as well as on the roadways. So what you have before you this evening is the Order of Taking for all of the pump station locations. There's two cross-country runs, one that goes in front of the Stop and Shop and the other that goes behind 400 East Plaza. So those are the two cross-country runs that we have. And then the other one was just the public versus private ways. So the private ways is also a taking for, specifically for sewer only. And when the board takes this action, just for folks at home, the Board of Selectmen, because we do not have a formal sewer commission, in this case, would be acting as sewer commissioners. So most Order of Takings, most easements are done at town meeting. But for sewer operations, it just needs to be done by the sewer, the sewer authority to take those easements. So the request is to approve the Order of Taking that has now been signed off and attested to for all the easements related to the site so we can move forward with the SRF, the State Revolving Loan Fund, funding of the project.
So just to briefly summarize one point, in some ways, a workaround is to allow us to, because we're using, we're only considering the sewers, not the whole roadway.
Well, legally, the only thing we can do is sewers as sewer commissioners. Everything else would have to go to town meeting.
Okay. Questions, Ed?
No, I don't have any questions. I have a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the Order of Taking with the Board of Selectmen acting as the sewer commission for the various easements as detailed in the Order of Taking.
Is that sufficient?
I would say as presented by the town attorney.
As presented by the town attorney. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, Michael?
So on page eighty-five of the packet, it's addendum to Certification of Council as to Title to Project Site. And then it's from the attorney, specifically B and C. There's no dates, taking dated blank 2019.
Exhibit B?
Exhibit, it says addendum A.
We can type the date. Yeah, B, private ways and private name. We can type the dates in there.
What's that?
We'll type the dates in there for the today, because obviously you're doing it as of today.
It's not copayment page.
And then the, I guess, the last is just a comment. Well, Chris, I guess the, you're certifying roads versus the town clerk certifying roads? Is that because the town clerk wouldn't certify the roads?
She didn't have any records. The county records wouldn't be in our possession, and the other roadways were too old.
So I guess just, just a comment on this, you know, I'm, again, just want to point out that we, we're getting this all last minute. Julie Kavanaugh, last chair, brought this up no less than six times over the last year that we had to take care of the easements and rightaways. On Wednesday, the fifth, it was handed to the clerk to certify for Monday, the tenth, and extended to the, extended to the seventeenth. Now, CDM Smith, David Young, explained that the, his part in that was because he was going based on our assessor's records and assumed that they were correct, which is a reasonable answer to me. It's my displeasure, and this is what appears again to be a huge lack of communication. And again, the board is doing things very, very, very last minute that we shouldn't be doing very last minute.
Chris, and I'll go, Don?
Mr. Chairman, what I've been told, actually by both KP and CDM, is that in most cases, there's a register of town-owned roads, and this clerk just certified something that's already been certified. So it's not a big deal. In this case, and I don't blame Anita, I think Anita did due diligence. She went to go check in her files, and when she found some deficiencies in it, she just didn't sign it. So it did mean that there was a little bit more of the process to it. But in other towns, they usually have a certification of public ways that are out there and available. I think something that, I think internally, we need to try to address as we move forward. So if it's a public way, it should be on file at the town clerk's.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At some point, we've got to do something, but I'm telling you, this is not as easy an answer as what you just heard. There were five people who worked on this, but they were only given a week because that was our deadline. And we have to make an action, this action and the next action by June thirtieth. Again, it's one of those, we're getting to it at the eleventh hour. Of the five people, there were three department heads. It wasn't just Anita. It was the engineer, the assessor, deputy assessor, the clerk, and two professional staff. All five of them couldn't come up with being able to say that they're certifying it. And I note here that the breakout that you're certifying personally includes certification that they were maintained by the town as public ways for over twenty years and/or were county ways. I'm not sure how you can make an attestation for that when you haven't been here for twenty years. The fact of the matter is that you were found, you found yourself in a place where you had to make a certification was because none of the other professional staff was willing to do that. So there clearly was a problem.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I've been the administrator for six years. Before I made a certification as an administrative officer of the organization, I asked Lincoln Hooper and others in the community, how long has the town been maintaining it, to make sure that I could attest that the town has maintained these roadways for more than twenty years. So that's correct, I wasn't here for twenty years. But I did seek out the information from folks that have been here for that period of time so we could attest to something that was accurate. I certainly would not attest to something that was inaccurate in my execution of my job.
I just wasn't expecting the town administrator to make that certification.
Steve?
Just a quick question for Chris. You, when you were talking about this earlier, you said that in most cases, most towns, this is a pretty, you know, simple process that normally the towns can certify it rather quickly.
That's correct.
Is that correct? I mean?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we have a situation that appears to be somewhat unusual. I mean, well, do most towns, the timing of this, the way it's happened, if it were what was described as a normal course of events, which is most of the time it can be certified easily, the timing of you requesting it of the clerk's office would not have been unusual, am I correct?
That's correct. Usually what I was advised by the town attorney, who does a lot of these for a lot of different communities, is usually it's a one-day venture, it's not something that's substantial.
I think we all agree that we, one of our objectives this year is to look at overall planning and so we don't bring, we bring things to the boards quicker. But that's going forward, this is where we are now. We have a motion and a second to move on this. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hands in favor. Okay, three and two, three to two.
If I might just make another comment?
Sure.
It's been said before, and it was validated by a county commissioner that lives in town. Can we recognize that the county doesn't own roads anymore? And maybe do one final taking of all county roads at town meeting?
Let's bring that back as an agenda and get some more information, Michael. Because that would, that would maybe ease some of these discussions going forward. Not that I don't enjoy the discussions, Michael. Let's, we'll bring that back. Okay, next on the agenda then is the bid award to Robert B. Hour Contract, eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do have this evening, folks from Weston and Sampson, Fran Yaniskewitch is here. And just, I wanted to, I think at the last meeting, I had indicated that we would have somebody from Weston and Sampson kind of maybe give their two cents in terms of the marketplace. I think there was a healthy and lengthy debate at the last meeting about the bids and how they came in and so forth. So I know we have, CDM is here as well to kind of talk about the strategy for this amount and then going forward to have a discussion on that. But the main focus of tonight is to do the bid award for, or the contract award for Robert Hour in the amount of eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents as authorized in Phase Two of Contract One of SW, of the Comprehensive Waste Water SRF Project four-four-two-four slash one.
Any more discussion, questions?
I don't know who you want to hear from first, or maybe a motion in a second before you have the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, move that we award the bid to Robert Hour with a contract of eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And authorize the town administrator to execute the Phase Two Contract CWSR F four-four-two-four dash one to the Robert Hour Company in the amount of eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
A second for discussion.
Okay. I think on Chris's recommendation, we'll start with Weston Sampson. What are you going to?
I can provide some information. I'm Fran Yaniskewitch with Weston and Sampson. And we, with Charlie Sumner, have been retained to assist in actually maintaining open communication between all departments and the people that are being served and make sure the transition to construction and the ongoing construction goes smoothly, that people can know what to expect. Me personally, I've been working in this business for just a little over forty-six years and actually helped a couple of towns start from zero, ground zero, with no sewers, and helped them get them going. And in one case, a twenty-five-year program of the town of Chelmsford started with no sewers to completely sew it. So I've got a lot of experience in seeing start and ongoing and making sure that the work is done smoothly and the communication is open, and Charlie will be here to maintain that open communication. What we did talk about at the kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago is our experience on, currently with bid prices. More so, more importantly, is the bid competition that we're seeing. We're seeing typically three and four bidders now. Not that long ago, seven, eight, nine bidders was the norm. Now we're seeing that there's so much work out there, utility work out there, that the competition is not as fierce as it once was. You don't find people sharpening their pencil, basically coming in and, and basically doing a competitive bid because currently the bid climate is such, they don't have to. And I don't blame them, is that they can actually submit the bids. I did take a look at your bid tabs and saw that you're looking at about a three percent differential between the top three or the only three bidders, which is also unusual. So it might have been said before, but I'll say it again, that's the price. That's the going rate. So if you try to bid it again, my guess is, if anything, you might see a higher price, the way things are going. And talking to folks that do cost estimating for us, outside firms that specialize in this, is you're starting to see increases that are just being tacked on, say, a project might start six months from now, looking at about a half a percent per month. So every delay you have in awarding a contract or putting a contract out, at least estimators, that's the kind of factor they're including. So I think that with regard to your prices and item by item, it really doesn't warrant going through them. The price is the price regardless of how a bidder structured their bid, how much went to paving, how much went to pump stations. But I also noted that RB Hour, rather than the half a million dollars that the other two bidders put in for mobilization, because they're local, they could do it actually cheaper as far as the mobilization and that price has been, savings has been passed on to the town. So if you throw that into the mix, you're looking at about a two percent difference between bid of number one and bid of number two. So again, just to attest what the prices are, and they are going up significantly on this type of work in the Commonwealth right now.
Steve? I'd like to ask what your thoughts are. We had this discussion at a previous Selectman's meeting. And I can understand, you know, how prices increase and can appreciate what you just said. But thirty-three percent above where we thought it was going to come is a pretty big increase. So are you, upon reviewing that, are you comfortable with that?
I really haven't gone into the basis for the original estimate, so I'm not sure what you're looking for, the start number. My sense is that that, it's a little bit high, but I would also, I don't know what the basis for the design was.
But are you seeing that kind of?
We've had a project that in one year increased twenty percent from what the original estimate was. So I'm not sure, again, what the original design was, if it changed at all. The quantities changed, gravity versus low pressure, I don't know those details. I do know that we've had a project, and it's actually a very difficult one because it'll involve work at night, and it's all work on a state highway, which makes it crazy expensive. And think about the amount of paving when you're putting in seven, eight inches of paving on a state highway. So I've seen those numbers go up by as much as twenty percent.
So can we assume that the assistance you will give us in the future will be to help guide us through these bid processes?
If we're asked to do that, absolutely.
You just said the price is the price, and I want to put CDM Smith on the spot, I'll ask them the same question. What has changed in this plan? I guess I'll wait for David to answer that. What has changed in this plan? And how did we go from eight and a half million to these bids? I spoke to some of the contractors, and the quick answer was, we all bid the same amount, roughly. So that's the price. So I'm trying to understand how we have a three and a half million dollar increase. If they all knew what the price was going to be, how come your, how come the CDM Smith, the estimators, didn't know what the price was going to be? We're not talking about a two-year difference. And if this is the way that our program, our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan is going, we really need to do something different. Because we did go from two hundred and forty million to three hundred million because of some inflation from when we passed the plan. But now we're going up three and a half million on one part of our Phase Two. So I guess those questions are more related, or more pointed at David Young from CDM Smith.
We'll, we'll let you off the hook and we'll move to CDM Smith.
We really owe it to the taxpayers to come in a little closer than this. And I guess I have to understand what changed, other than the market, to allow for. And Stephen says thirty percent. My number's a lot higher than thirty percent, but I don't want to argue.
Good evening, good to see you again. David Young with CDM Smith, Mike Judice, project manager. Continue on with the discussion we had last week. Be happy to try to answer that question again. Certainly, we know it's a pressing question, and we know we're all under the scrutiny, credibility of that issue. You know, the, the estimate that we had at the fifty percent, which was even less than fifty percent at the time, conceptual stage, really, so that you could have a number to start your capital planning leading up to a town meeting, was eight and a half million. And your bids came in at eleven point three. And as we explained last week, tried to explain, it's really, we looked at it in three components. You've got pipe, you've got- You've got pipe, you've got pumping stations, and you've got paving. Three main components in this project. If you look at that, half of the, well, forty-two percent of the cost increase is in the paving. And the other two are split roughly equal. Twenty-nine percent of the cost increase is in the pumping station costs that we receive. And the other remaining percentage, twenty-nine percent, is spread across the piping and the other miscellaneous details that are in the contract. There was no one specific item in there, other than the paving prices appeared to be up almost fifty percent. And that's what accounted for that one point two million of the increase.
Just a follow-up. David, we had several conversations on this, and you always assured us that it was standard pricing, that we were safe going to town meeting with twenty-four million. And that's not the case now. And I certainly can accept what you said. But going forward, how are we not going to ever do this again? Because these price increases, after we sold this on town meeting, it's really unacceptable. And we have to answer to those people. And I feel like we look foolish, bringing these things to town meeting, assuring them that this is what it's going to be. And if you're up five percent or ten percent, it's a little bit more plausible. This, to me, makes us all look a little foolish.
No one feels more the way you do than we do. You know, like I said, it's a credibility thing. And yes, when I said that before, I meant it. Unfortunately, this doesn't prove that out. As I think, I think Selectman McManus mentioned last time, you know, sometimes you hit the highs, sometime you hit the lows. You try to get the average of the pricing as you do a long-term program. Unfortunately, you know, we stumbled out of the blocks on this one. No question about it. We're not happy about it. You know, I think Selectman Ballantyne asked, what are the lessons learned? Well, you know, we're going to be doing more frequent cost estimating going forward on a lot of our projects. I went back through and acquired some data from projects that we've opened, not just us, in Harwich, but across the state of Massachusetts. And probably half of them were up over the number a little bit, and half of them were below the number. You know, some people are happy, some people aren't. It's just the type of work that's happening. And when you're not getting seven or eight people scrutinizing a bid, and you're only getting two or three, or in this case, four, you know, they're putting out the numbers that they feel comfortable with at that point in time. That's the reality check.
Steve?
I don't doubt you feel the same way we do about this. I mean, this is not a, you know, situation where we're trying to be adversarial on a, you know, or personalize it at all. And I think the last time we met, I just said, you know, we're all in this same boat here, right? So, what we're trying to do is represent the people of this town in a way that they truly can understand where we're going with the budget. And I think what you just said might be a path to a better understanding for us. And that is, if we can, you can continually monitor where the market appears to be as we're getting closer to a final bid, and keep us informed, then, you know, we can keep the taxpayers informed as well. I think Michael's correct. I mean, it's really tough, you know, to have a town meeting that we had this year with a lot of justified scrutiny, and then to have, you know, this kind of come right on the heels of it. And it's our responsibility, I think, to try in every way we can to give everyone the best picture of what it's going to cost them. So, if there's a way for us to have a more frequent interaction with you relative to the cost, and I'm sure Chris could work on this for us, then that might, you know, allow us to be both prepared as a board, but also prepare the taxpayers for an event like this. Because, you know, I'm sure you're right. I'm sure it's happening around the state and around the country. I've been involved in a lot of bids where they went up a great deal. But again, you know, this is our bid, so, you know.
It's all about what it means to me. In this case, it's what it means to the town of Harwich. I understand that.
There's an obvious lesson learned is not go to town meeting until we have a ninety-some percent design rather than fifty percent. In other words, we move faster than we slow the process down, so we get to ninety-nine, ninety-five, ninety-nine percent.
Delay at that point, and we'd have to look at how it works with the timing for, and that's part of the issue. I know a lot of, not a lot, some communities that aren't in the SRF program, because they have a little more flexibility in terms of timing, they'll bid the project before they go to town meeting. So, they have a real bid number going into town meeting than the number is with the number.
Yeah, it seems an obvious, one obvious lesson that would help us out.
It's just that the timing of the SRF program doesn't necessarily allow you to do that. It's something that we can look at.
And the timing will change each year. This year, we're trying to be the first one. Now, everyone's going to be in on it, so we may not have that same timing pressure going forward.
No, but regarding the, you know, keeping everything up to date, Mike and his staff now are updating the remaining work using those unit costs that we've just received, as well as the database that we've been using, just to make sure we are using the absolute latest cost available for the Harwich area.
Ed?
Yeah. The twenty-four million that was voted on a year ago by the voters and approved, which is the construction budget that we have to work with, that was set at, in March, a year ago, March of fifteen, fifteen months before we opened the bid. You know? And so, it would have been nice to sort of do estimate updates along the way. But given that you're fifteen months out, if the estimates showed increasingly, there isn't a whole lot you can do about it, because you've already voted the amount. You know? And the other option is simply to push through to the hundred percent design package and put it out to bid, and don't vote on it until you have a bid in hand.
Don? Chris, I'll get you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I totally agree with what Ed just said, because the bottom line here, this has been very collegial, and I appreciate that, but it's not Don Industries, it's not Steve Company, it's the town of Harwich. It's a municipality. And these estimates are way off. Even if we use the constant percentage that was talked about, that only gives you twelve percent in two years. This was done in March of the year before last. And it's the very poster child for everything that goes wrong when you don't go to a town meeting to ask for approval with something in your hand. As the fire department was the very definition of how you're supposed to do it. You have a bid, you've got an abstract sheet, and you say, this is what we're going to build. My problem here is, and I just want to read from the warrant explanation, it goes, I can't support anything at this point. Yes, you can assure me that we can get everything done. Because what was voted on at town meeting with the explanation was, Phase Two of our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan requires designing construction of a watershed collection system. In fiscal eighteen, the design dollars in intermunicipal agreement with Chatham were funded. The FY nineteen request includes the actual construction costs of the collection system, also including the tie-in costs with Chatham in their pump station and piping to their treatment facility. And I'm emphasizing this. This will fully implement Phase Two of our regulatory required plan. I don't see how we can go back to town meeting and say, well, yeah, we awarded the first half of this contract, but we can't get it done. It would be like saying that we're going to build a fire station that requires three bays for three trucks, but we're only going to do two of them, and maybe we'll go back later next year and ask them to finish with the third bay. This isn't that things happen. This is what town meeting was given as an estimate, and they were told this finishes everything. If we start going ahead and doing a little bit of it, and then going back and asking them for a little bit more, it's disingenuous on the one hand, and on the other end, who's going to believe us in the future?
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. You know, obviously, I'm very unhappy that we didn't hit the targets that we wanted to hit. I do think it's been, has been brought up, doing a fifty percent design estimate really leaves some room for maneuver. And one of the decisions that we did make, there were several homes that we had where they had to have the grinder pumps. So, we did take some of the pipes and put those deeper. So, we intentionally wanted to make, for the residents of the town, the operation more gravity and not have them be stuck, if you would, with the cost of doing the pumps. So, there were some design changes that were made after. Is that, it's probably not the full thirty-three percent by any stretch, but I think that there were some design changes in terms of, in terms of that. And I just want to remind folks, you know, when we did the fire station, and I know the fire chief had to sit up there and say, he originally came in and said, well, we're going to build a station for four million dollars. And then when they tried to design what he thought he could build, he came back and it was, ended up being closer to seven million. So, you know, things do change. Obviously, unhappy that we had such a large amount. But I think it's, you know, we have to also be realistic that we're subject to market forces. The market forces in this case have really kind of been unfavorable to us. In terms of, you know, moving forward, I think it's our intent to go out for Contract Two, get done what we can get done, maximize the zero interest, and then put together a Contract Three for whatever's left. Because I do think that the point that was made at town meeting, and I heard that last week, that we said we're going to do a certain area, and we should come back and do that area that we've laid out. So, I think that we would do Contract Three, have that bid out, time the bid. Because of procurement law, we have to time that bid in such a way that we have that close to town meeting, so we don't have people holding their bid prices too long. And we will have that Contract Three. So, when we go to town meeting in the fall, hopefully for DHY, the initiative with Dennis and Yarmuth, we'll have actual numbers and try to do, you know, this closer to a hundred percent design plan.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We should not conflate the fire station with this. The fire station went out to bid prior to town meeting. The bid prices were higher prior to town meeting. Town meeting knew what the actual price was going to be, and knowingly and willingly voted in favor of that higher price. Then they went out to the ballot box and approved that. My question is, it's to you, Mr. Administrator, is that are you saying here tonight, you guaranteeing that within this pot of money that we're going to finish everything? So, if we, if we wind up awarding this contract, that we're complying with a town meeting vote? That's a different story from this being an oh, well.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, you know, if I could predict the future and know exactly what the bid prices are going to be fifteen months in advance, I wouldn't be sitting here. I'd be doing a different job. So, we put out, we say to people what the intent is. If the marketplace wasn't as hot, if we had ten bidders as opposed to four, it probably would have hit. But I can't speak to, or I think be held to account, for how the overall economy is doing. So, I think what was said is, the intent is to do the full scope of the project to actually do the construction. So, it didn't come in as the way we would like it to come in.
And I will say, Mr. Chair, that the contract was out to bid for two weeks. I mean, and I, in my gut, as someone who used to do this for a living, that had to have some effect on this, because there was a, it was a very short period of time to encourage competition.
Ed, and Michael, have you?
Yeah. As I understand, one of the reasons why we had the vote approving the project before we had a bid in hand is to be able to move ahead with our application for SRF funding. We had to have a
Regional agreement in place.
Had a regional agreement in place, but you also had to have a commitment from the voters on funding it. So, you know, on the one hand, if we had waited until this town meeting, we probably would have been able to have a better nexus between the bid price and what the estimate was, because the estimate would have been done last March instead of years ago last March. But on the other hand, we would have given up the ability to get the SRF zero interest funding. And I'm not sure where the trade-off is there. Well, actually, I think I am pretty sure that I'd rather trade for three million.
For almost fifteen million, saving about a hundred and zero.
In retrospect, my comment, and again, I don't want to, you know, we're on the same team here, but my frustration, part of this is, is that CDM Smith, you guys fell behind the milestone set in this whole process. I think, what, two or three months behind? And there may be reasons for that. But to the extent that those reasons are not putting enough resources on to get the design phase caught up. So, if that happened, we might have been able to get to town meeting with it much closer to the final design than we did. So, I do want to be sure going forward, if we do this again, that we have the proper resources to move this as quickly as we can.
If I may.
I expect to rebuttal on that.
I'm not sure, you know, we were right on schedule back when we made submissions to DEP, and then we hit some delays going forward. And that was as of February when we were here. I remember one of the meetings giving you an update, and we expected to be out to bid in March.
Right.
To address the other schedule issues, there were certain requirements and deadlines once you get on the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, which we got you on the first year after you authorized the design funds at town meeting. So, once you get that, you apply for that in August. You find out at the end of the year whether you make it. You were on there, you were actually the top of the list, and to get zero percent interest loans, that meant you had to prove that you passed your funding that following June. So, that's why you went to the spring town meeting a year ago, so that you could stipulate and certify your town meeting article to DEP that you passed your funding. Then that required us to submit a ninety-plus percent design package to the DEP for review in October of that year, meaning October, two thousand and eighteen. So, all those milestones were all met and everything. Staffing was not an issue. Getting all the final details done has been just, you know.
But nevertheless, we were behind this spring, right? In February, February, March, I think we were behind.
Originally looking to bid, as Dave said, February, March timeframe, certainly, yes. So, a couple of months behind.
Again, I'm looking how to move ahead.
Sure. Yes. And as, well, as Chris said, the process for moving forward that we have discussed is to put out, within the next few weeks, Contract Two. We've had to go back and redesign the pumping station to a suction lift pumping station at the board's request. That's almost completed. And we're, been submitted, we have submitted that to DEP. We're waiting their final comments. We don't expect them to be extensive, because we've addressed them all, similar to what was provided to us once we finally got them. They switched reviewers during the process in their staffing issues. So, we hope to get that out soon. You have about six point two million dollars remaining for a contract to be awarded. And that includes, because we're allowing for the five percent contingency that DEP requires in SRF projects be held. So, you're, you would be committing, if you award the hour contract tonight, about twelve million dollars. That includes the bid price plus the five percent contingency. So, that leaves you six and a half, take out five percent, you're down around six point two that we can award. And then, anything that is not put in there, we would go out as a third contract. Should you decide to bring that, request for that additional funding, you would bring a bid number to town meeting, at your special town meeting in the fall.
Michael?
Just a few final comments. First, thank you, David, for the explanation. Certainly, going forward, we have to do better than we're doing. Congratulations to Weston and Sampson for hiring Charlie Sumner. We look forward to, you had a great hire, look forward to working with him. To Don's point on reading the article, maybe this is another lesson in how we word articles, be a little bit more cautious about how we word articles. But I've been contacted by a dozen people that urged me to vote no on this. And I explained that I couldn't vote no on this, as much as I'd like to at this point vote no on this, because of the SRF funding. And what people need to realize, and the public needs to realize, is we may be three and a half million up on our bid, but we're saving roughly fifteen million dollars in zero percent interest. And if we, as a board, voted no on this, I don't think we'd be doing a favor to the people in town of Harwich if we didn't get zero percent on the next round.
Steve, and then we'll
I'd like to second that. I think, and I think Ed pointed out the savings we were going to have with the zero percent, so.
Yeah.
I'll third it. Yeah, so, absolutely.
There's time for a vote then. Don?
Yeah, I feel compelled to at least explain why I'm not going to vote for it.
Yeah, I feel compelled to at least explain why I'm not going to vote for it. At some point or another, somebody's got to be held responsible. It's town meeting. It's not my money, it's not their money, it's town meeting. We asked town meeting for twenty-four million dollars, and we said it would fully implement Phase Two. Whether or not that's exactly true, or whether we can go back again, we don't have enough money to finish this project. If this were tennis courts, if this were a fire department building, if this were anything, we would not be allowed to go forward until we secured the full amount of the funding for what it was that we bonded, we approved the bonding.
Okay.
And I'd like Don to know, I respect his position on that. My only, my argument is that we are, we are about to cost ourselves a lot more money than the three and a half million if we delay this. And just to remind everybody, this isn't something we're doing because we want to. Something we're doing because we have to. So we're not getting off the hook on this. So we will have to go back to town, town meeting and explain to people why we made the decision we made. But a big part of that is not losing this funding.
Okay. Anyone in the audience here to join us? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four in favor and one opposed. Okay. Thank you, and we'll, we'll move ahead.
Thank you.
Michael?
I would also like to point out, we finally have a big job that somebody in town bid on. I'm thrilled that the company got the contract.
Absolutely.
We all agree with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Town Administrator's report?
You did have a review of town meeting actions on past fail.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to put this on, and not that I want to discuss specifically any of these items. I'd like, are there items that you folks want to bring up quickly to consider discussion going forward? In other words, I should put it on agenda for more, for more full discussion. If you're not ready now, you can email me and I'll add them on the agenda.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
You added the one I wanted, which was all kind of...
Okay, little kind of reward.
Some point to get ahead of the game, the budget.
Yeah. Okay. And you have this now. Email me, I'll leave it failed, and we'll bring it back for discussions on what we wish to go. One discussion we're going to have to bring up in the near future is the pet cemetery. And so now...
Lack of.
The lack of. Now it's been reverted back to us, to the board of Selectmen, where we go from here. So I won't do that next week or two, but keep that in your mind. We'll have to bring that back. Okay? Now we'll, Ed?
I'd like to, I need to contact the town clerk. And there's a couple of the items that failed, but they failed because they didn't get a two-thirds majority. And some of the reasons of those failures was people weren't pleased with how they were presented or they didn't go through the proper, and I want to look at some of those, what the votes were at town meeting. And I may ask for some of those to be brought back. There's also, I think, a couple that did pass that are going to require some additional work in the coming year to be able to fully implement.
Bring those to me and we'll put those on you, Jennifer, for the discussion.
Yeah, some of them, like the plastic straw and the bottles, plastic bottles, we'll have to put together administrative plan to implement those. So we will work on those. You ready for the town administrator's report?
I am.
Just in terms of, I did attend last week CPC meeting. They had a kind of an open session for what the needs of the community were. I did go and present. I know Stephen and Ed were there, that I don't, I had to leave because the finance committee people grabbed me to go into the finance committee meeting. But I tried to just kind of provide an overview of some projects that we have and that these may be applications that we would be submitting. But I tried to cover recreation, historic, open space, and housing, just to give an overview to them. They seemed like they were fairly receptive when I was making those comments. I don't know if there was any others. I was trying to stay to write down notes and FinCom grabbed me. The reason why finance committee...
I think Bad Heart may have been in that meeting as well?
No.
Not that one?
He wasn't there for that.
Okay.
On the finance committee meeting, the reason why they grabbed me is the recreation director didn't attend, so I had to kind of cover, but they're going from the hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand that the board approved. There's two parts to that approval process for the programs, the revenue that gets generated from those programs, staff authorization to spend. So I did go over there and they did ultimately vote to approve that, so it went up to two hundred thousand. So that program, the, I want to call it the after-school program, I guess literally after the school season, they're running that program because of the high needs. So we did get approval to do that. One thing the finance committee had mentioned, too, was to do a follow-up to town meeting. I think the first year I was here, we had members of the finance committee, I think the chair and the vice chair of finance committee, the chair and vice chair of the Selectmen, got together with the moderator and the town clerk and just talked about, how can we make town meeting flow a little smoother? Is there anything we want to make sure that we get in there? I think one thing, obviously, I'm thinking about, we have some financial material in the warrant, but maybe we should do a finance book and kind of get into, have a listing of all the debt that's out there, the debt impacts, and provide more information. One of my other communities that I used to work in, we did put together what was called the finance guide and provided that information to the, to the residents. So that's something I think internally we'll look at, putting something together. Probably as a supplement to the warrant, not part of the warrant, but a supplement, so we can cover some areas. Also, on the good news front, we did receive, on the cultural council, we got the grant in for five thousand dollars thanks to the effort of Cindy and Charlene. Charlene wanted to make sure, I specifically called out Cindy for her efforts. That's to do some work at the cultural center, to look at the kitchen and try to make that more operational and some other elements that they have. Also, we received a twenty thousand dollar grant. Charlene did a lot of work on this for municipal vulnerability preparedness, so to help the town prepare a plan for sea level rise, which I think I had alluded to, the need to do some additional work on that. And then also invite, if folks are available, I know this is a little bit late notice, but we did hear from the Safe Roots Schools, the contractor for AECOM, AECOM is the name of the company, and then the lady from the state that runs the program, runs, yeah, that specific program, is coming out tomorrow at two o'clock, just to kind of walk the neighborhood, to see the situation of the sidewalks. So that's anticipated from two to four tomorrow. So I am planning on attending, but certainly I think if any of the Selectmen have time or interest, you're more than welcome to join us. We're starting at the elementary school at two o'clock. So I wanted to at least throw that out there.
Okay.
That concludes my comments this evening.
We will go to Ed?
Nope.
And Don? Michael?
Nope.
Steve?
Just quite sorry for confusing, you know, a town meeting vote with a ballot vote.
We'll forgive you.
I commented on earlier.
I have none. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
It's almost a move.
Second, all in favor? You're not going to oppose this, are you?
We're all hard in favor.